Okay, it is the appointed hour, six o'clock, and I will call this November fifth, two thousand thirteen, meeting of the Andalusia City Council to order. And I'll call on Councilman Scogneres to lead us in the prayer and pledge allegiance.
May we pray. Father, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, whom you allowed to come down from the glory of heaven and down the cross for all of humanity. We pray that God you forgive us of our trespasses and those who trespass against us. Thank you for our mayor and council, Father. We ask that you for your blessing on many decisions that have to be made. And we ask that you grace us tonight, Father, with sound judgment. Father, we thank you for all the blessings you allow us to enjoy. We ask this all in Jesus' name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome our guests that joined us, have joined us tonight. We do that, we welcome our guests at every city council meeting. And usually, the only guests there are the press and the staff. So, we're happy that some citizens have come to be with us tonight to give us some input in some of the decisions that we have to make as your mayor and council. We always meet on the first and third Tuesday of each month at six o'clock at five thirty workshop, and you're always welcome to come and be a part of that. First item of business is to consider as approval of a minutes for a regular meeting held October the fifteenth.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October the fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, that they be presented as presented.
Approved as presented.
Right.
Alright, thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October the fifteenth as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous now. Thank you for that. Our next item of business is something that we've all been looking forward to now for some time, and that is the first drawing of our Andy Bucks winner. And I know most everyone in this room is familiar with the Andy Bucks program, but this is a program involving twenty of our local merchants. And each merchant puts fifty dollars a month into the pot, which creates a thousand dollars. And that thousand dollars is then used as a pot that will be, will buy a thousand dollars in Andy Bucks. And when people do business with those folks or go into their stores, they're entitled to collect these tickets with numbers on them. And then we have, we keep the corresponding number that the merchant does and turns all that in. This is the first month, this is for the month of October. Over to my left, to your, to your right, seated out there. As you can see, that box is almost full. And I have no idea how many, how many tickets are in there, but it's quite a number. So, it looks like it's successful. I'd like to read the names of the participating merchants to give them credit for helping make this successful. And hopefully, as the time goes on and the Christmas season gets close, folks will get even more excited about the Andy Bucks program. Two Guys Pies, Andalucia Farmers Co-op, Andalucia Sewing Center, Ansley Place, Barrows Fine Furniture, Beefo Brady's, Brooks Hardware, Christopher's Diamonds, Darby's, David's Catfish, Delta Lighting, Harold's Furniture, Ireland Trailer, Lee Samurai, Mary Kay Cosmetics, which is Nancy Dove's consultants, Pale Moon Yarns, Sporting Lifestyles, Walker Business Machines, Ward and Company, and also Yo Craving being the last one. So, I want to thank, thank those merchants for making this program possible. I think I've had a lot of questions about it from people outside of Andalucia. And it seems to be creating some excitement in our neighboring communities. And hopefully, it'll bring business to our folks in Andalucia, our merchants, our participating merchants. Okay, first item of business is an ordinance, number two thousand thirteen.
Draw.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to do the drawing. I got so carried away with all my speech, I forgot to do the drawing. Alright. Okay, drum roll. Can we? Kimberly Jacobs is our assistant upstairs, and she's gonna do the honor of, as you can see, she's had that locked safely since she collected those. And she's gonna reach in there and pull out the winning ticket. The winning ticket number is three, six, six, five, seven. Repeat, three, six, six, five, one, seven. Yeah, five, one, seven. Let me just do it again. Three, six, six, five, one, seven. Now, there, there's no information on the back of this ticket. So whoever the winner is, this will be posted on the City of Andalucia's website. I know it'll be on the Andalucia Star News website and other places. They need, they have thirty days to verify that they are the holder of the other half of this ticket. And when they do, if they do in thirty days, then they will receive coupons that provide them access to the thousand dollars in Andy Bucks. If they, if it's not claimed in thirty days, then that pot rolls over, and next month, we'll be drawing for two thousand dollars in Andy Bucks. Yes, and by the way, the colors of the tickets change each month. So that's kind of one way that you can keep up with that. Okay. Now to item of action business. The ordinance, number two thousand thirteen dash zero three, which is a zoning ordinance. This is rezoning a lots one and two of the Monizuma Courts addition to the City of Andalucia, which is located on East Three Notch Street. It is presently zoned R one, and its request is to rezone it, let me get this correct, I think B one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wigan? R one to B one. The petitioners, those who have, who have made the request is, are the Smiths, Mr. and Ms. Cam Smith and Sharon Smith. And they are here, since they are the petitioners and asking for that, we'll ask them to come forward, and if they want to make some comments to the city council about that, they'll be given the opportunity to do that. We ask you that you hold your comments to three minutes or less, and we will give you a warning when there's thirty seconds left and when there's fifteen seconds left. So, first, we'll ask y'all to speak, whichever one or both, if you want to speak. And then anyone supporting, in addition to them supporting that, and then we'll have the other side. So, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last council meeting and workshop, and I'm not gonna go into all the details as to what we're looking at proposing to build as it was in the newspaper, and we've had a lot of positive comments from that. But since the last council meeting and workshop, Councilman Powell had recommended that we possibly go out and talk to people in the neighborhood and get their input. And we have done that, and it's been very favorable and positive input. The problem that I believe they have is the traffic flow. There's major traffic flow from East Three Notch back over to Sanford Road, and then from Sanford Road back over to East Three Notch. And, you know, as we were talking to these people, we realized, you know, they have a problem already. It's, it's an existing problem. As a matter of fact, we met with Mr. and Ms. Lopez. They kind of felt like they might like to have speed bumps out there because people fly through there and they're right in the curve. But, you know, that's, that's an existing problem, and, you know, that's, that's already out there. Now, the business that my wife is proposing to do is during banking hours. It's a low-volume traffic-type business, as most of the work is done by telephone and online. And we just don't feel like that the traffic is going to be a major problem. Now, one other thing that I would like to discuss, in the workshop, it was brought up that the property values could be decreased. And what we have done is we went and talked with a state-certified real estate appraiser and asked his opinion, that lives and works right here in Andalucia. And it was his opinion that, that there is no evidence out there that it would ever decrease anybody's, the value of anybody's property. And he actually said that what we're looking at building could be considered an enhancement, which could actually possibly increase the value of the property at some point in time. Now, I, I don't, I think that's pretty much what we really wanted to say unless. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, does anyone else want to speak in favor of the petition to re, rezone the property? Mr. Pippen?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, this property in question has been in the Taylor and Pippen family for close to seventy years. And we've had no less than a dozen opportunities over the years to sell this piece of property at a very, very nice piece of change. We've always passed it up because we didn't feel like it would be suitable for the community and if anything, add to, to say nothing, I mean, just take away, to say nothing, add to. This is going to be a very attractive business and will, in all probability, enhance the neighborhood and provoke, I hope, other businesses in that, businesses in that neighborhood to upgrade their business when they see what a beautiful business these people are going to present. And the only family that's left now, just my two daughters and myself, and we wholeheartedly agree with, with the Smiths and what their, what their endeavors are. And we hope that you'll see fit to rule in their favor so that they can proceed with their plans and their business. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Pippen. Or is anyone else here to speak in favor of the rezoning? Yes, sir. Tell us, tell us your name. I'm not sure.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, yeah, Richard Shart here. I live on Roseland, on the corner of Went and Roseland. I don't know whether I should be against it or for it, but actually, I'm for the business. I think it would be, you know, a nice thing for that corner versus some other businesses that could be in there. All the people that I've talked to on Roseland really don't have any problems with the business being there. Our problem is, is we don't want a driveway on Roseland. It's true, we do have traffic that goes from Sanford across, they cut across and go to Three Notch. And we do have more on Went now since Simone's has been open. But I know that there's, probably the city doesn't want any more driveways on Three Notch, but I don't see the difference if you're gonna turn right down Roseland, you're turning off of Three Notch anyway, when you're pulling back on, whether it's Roseland or a driveway, wouldn't make any difference on the Three Notch traffic. So, our request would be that we don't have a driveway on our street and just keep our neighborhood like it is and keep the business on Three Notch. That's, that would be what we would like.
Alright.
I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Anybody else speaking on that side of the issue wish to come to the mic? Okay, I know there's some folks who are opposed to the rezoning. I know Dr. Rydel and his wife Lisa are here. Dr. Rydel, do you, do you wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I live on East Three Notch Street, fourteen oh one, which is one block where this proposed development is to go. And when I learned about the proposed rezoning from residential to business, I talked to a number of my neighbors, and I found that there were several people that joined me in opposing this. And where I'm coming from, I'm looking at a residential area, and I think it's just not good for a, a city that has a residential section of the street to have business encroaching in there. Now, please understand, I am convinced that Mr. and Mrs. Smith are going to have a first-rate business that's gonna be attractive and well-kept. There's no question in my mind about the appearance and how they're gonna maintain it. However, I wish they had picked a location that was zoned commercial, that's appropriate for that type of business. But where they have proposed to put it, there are actually people living on every side of that lot. And once you change a property from residential to business, there's no turning back. And I've seen it in other cities where there's an approachment, you have a residential area, Roseland doesn't have any businesses, there is the issue with the driveway. There, there is now, if this passes, there's gonna be a business on Roseland. And I just think it alters the characteristic. I've seen the plans, they include parking for nine cars, there's gonna be a sign on the corner. It's, it's just gonna change the characteristic of that street. And I do believe that it will be detrimental for my property values and property values on that street, and consequently, tax revenue for the city. And I know in the positions that you all are in, you, you are going to make the decision that in your judgment is in the best interest of the city as a whole. I encourage you to do that. I just would like to express that my wife and I and other residents who would be right there where that business is are not in favor of it, and I, I wish that you will take that into account. I know it's difficult to turn somebody down, especially after they put some planning into it and thought and everything, but they knew it was zoned residential, they were hoping it would get changed to business, and I urge you to consider the opinion of the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rydel. Let's see, Larry Maddox, I believe, signed up. Larry, would you like to speak?
I would like to thank the opportunity to Mr. Mayor to, to give me a chance to speak on the project on East Three Notch Street and Roseland Drive. When Doc, Darwin Pippen approached me several months back and tell me about the position, about the building, and I said, I agree with it. But then he showed me the diagram of the sign and the, and the street where it's gonna come out. And that's what I told him, I disagreed, because I live the second house on the left on Roseland Drive. And, and I, and I told him that when you go up there to stop at East Three Notch Street, it's very, the road is, you know, they go fast on the, and you have to stay there, and you don't want to worry about coming up there and getting hit by the houses, the cars on that street, plus cars gonna come out of the, out of the business. And I know they, you know, you can't control people coming out, and you, and when you come out there, you don't know if they're gonna go left or right when they're coming out of the business. And that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't, I don't think I had anyone else to sign up. Does anyone else want to speak on this issue? Alright, the public hearing portion of this would be closed then, and members of the council, the ordinance is put before you. I will point out that the Planning Commission did approve this and sent it along to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, the ordinance, two thousand thirteen oh three, be accepted as written in all criteria that attain to it.
Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from members of the council on this issue? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed, same sign? Thank you for that. I would say to both sides of this issue, it's a tough decision for the council to make. I think the fact that, that East Three Notch Street has been basically mixed-use for fifty years in some parts of it has an impact on, on my thinking at least. And having seen what the Smiths are gonna do out there, I don't see it having that big of an impact in the community or in the neighborhood. I think as, making the decision for the community as a whole, I, I see that as basically being an improvement, quite frankly, to the street. And I don't think that traffic, the impact of traffic is gonna be that great. As was pointed out, an awful lot of that business is done now on computers and online and by phone, and not that much traffic actually in and out. So, that's, I just wanted to give you that for my thinking on the issue. Thank you for that. Okay, next item is resolution two thirteen dash twenty-nine, which is a sales tax issue for Zaxby's. I know there's some people here tonight who, who want to speak on this, and we have, we have your names here, and we'll, we will ask you to do that soon. But before we start, I would like to just kind of give a little background on this so that we kind of all know what the facts are in this situation. In December of two thousand and two, that's eleven years ago, soon to be eleven years ago, the voters of Covenant County in Andalucia approved a constitution, an amendment to the Alabama constitution. The constitution of Alabama constitution nineteen oh one was amended by Amendment seven twenty-five. Amendment seven twenty-five then became the law of Alabama after it was codified and put into the books soon thereafter. So it really probably didn't become law until sometime early in two thousand and three, some ten years ago. The purpose of the constitutional amendment was for the promotion of economic and industrial development in Covington County. And it's a long, it's too long to read here tonight, but it, it provides for, gives counties, like, it gives Covington County, and it gives cities that are larger than a certain population, and I think that's fifteen hundred or two thousand, I don't remember, but in any event, Andalucia is one of those cities. It gives the, the county and the cities certain powers to promote and develop business, industry, commerce, and the economic welfare of Covenant County and Andalucia, in this case, Andalucia. Now, that was, that was put into, as I said, went into law basically early in two thousand and three. And again, was voted on by a, by a winning vote in Covenant County. Now, if your business was founded prior to two thousand and three, the City of Andalucia did not have the, the power and the authority to do what is being proposed to, to be done. Zaxby's or, has already been done in other locations, and I'll talk about in just a second. So, the rebate, as we may call it, the sales tax, two cents of sales tax, was not possible before two thousand and three, when this constitutional amendment was passed. So, if your business was founded before then, the city could not do that for you. And there were a lot of other things the city couldn't do, or the county couldn't do, before this amendment. Since two thousand and three, there have been, I think, three uses of this constitutional amendment by the City of Andalucia. The first one that I remember was for a business located in the old Wal, that wanted to locate in the old Walmart's location on the bypass. And that was a, that was a house, a house supply, building supply-type business. And they came in and, and made a pretty significant investment in that facility. If you remember, and I don't want to get too long-winded about this, but if you remember, that, that building sat empty for many years after the Super Walmart was constructed. That building sat empty for quite a number of years. And, and this was a way to get, using this, this constitutional amendment was a way to help bring a going concern, a major investment, and a major employer into that building and get that building started back towards full occupancy. And I think, if I'm, I'm correct, we, that was a, at that time, the city's sales tax was two cents. I think it was one cent for five years. So, that was the first time that was used. The second time it was used was at a store in West Gate Plaza, which was, I think, a, was a ladies' clothing store that went out of, the entire chain went out, went bankrupt several years ago. And while the store in Andalucia had been successful, it didn't matter. They had to go out of business because their parent company went out of business. Well, the local developer who owned that piece of property was able to get that during the, let me restate that, during the bankruptcy proceedings, some of the stores that had been successful got bought out by some investors. And the local developer who owned West Gate Plaza was able to entice them to think about reopening the store in Andalucia. And they requested a one-cent rebate, which they have, was, was granted to them. And then thereafter, the sporting goods store located there requested a one-cent rebate, and that was granted to them. Now, all three of these were handled exactly the same way as the deal on Zaxby's. It was published in the newspaper, and we didn't hear a word from anybody. And it happened to occur during my administration, the first, the second administration. And we didn't, we heard no complaints from anyone about those three events. So about two years ago, I suppose now, one afternoon, it was a Friday afternoon, if I recall correctly, I got a call from some folks, and they identified themselves as Mr. Brown, and he and his brother were retiring from their jobs over in Georgia and wanted to open a Zaxby's Chicken Restaurant in South Alabama or Northwest Florida. And I was told that they were looking at Greenville, Alabama, Andalucia, Alabama, and maybe one or two cities in Northwest Florida, Crestview and Fort Walton. I don't remember exactly which ones. And wanted to know if we would be interested in having such a restaurant in Andalucia. And I said, of course, we're always welcome new business. And so, things went by, and they came down and, and looked in Andalucia. They looked at Greenville as well, and looked at Crestview, I think. And finally, after looking at several different sites around Andalucia, they finally wanted to get some statistics on the site out here in front of the mall where the old, the old Chevron, Exxon station, actually, Rogers Exxon was located. Now, if you remember Exxon's, Rogers Exxon existed there for many years and went out of business, I think, when Mr. Rogers got sick and passed away, or maybe not too long before that. And it was a going business and did well. But after it closed, it sat empty for many, many years and quite frankly, became a eyesore for the City of Andalucia. And it was not creating a di- And it was not creating a dime's worth of income for anybody. And in fact, it was becoming a, as I said, an eyesore for our city. Many of the people coming through Andalusia, uh, going south to the beaches and other areas, that's basically the first thing they saw when they stopped in Andalusia, is they saw that old empty Rogers Exxon station. And I don't know how many times I was asked by citizens of Andalusia, "When are you gonna do something about getting a business there in that location?" So I was elated, quite frankly, when Browns called me and told me after some investigation that they were interested in, uh, possibly locating at that site. Now, that site had some problems, and it was gonna cost them some additional money to put that, uh, to put their restaurant at that site because it had been a, the location of a gasoline station. And we all know, uh, I'm sure all of us know, the issues related to, uh, problems with old filling stations, with underground tanks, where they've been, uh, gasoline storage, oil storage, and all that kinda stuff. And as I said, uh, that, that station had been in operation basically since the, uh, the mall was constructed back in the late sixties. Uh, but it was gonna cost Browns a, a, a pretty good little chunk to go in there. First, that, that piece of property had to be razed, it had to be taken down and removed. Secondly, the, the, the tanks had to be taken out of the ground. All of the soil around those tanks had to be taken out and, and removed. Fresh, clean soil had to be brought in, and then it had to be studied by the EPA, and it had to be passed by the EPA, and all that costs money. Uh, plus, the traffic count at that site was somewhat lower than the traffic count at the site that they were looking at at Greenville, which by the way, was a green site. There'd been no business located there, so they, they wouldn't be facing these issues with the EPA and these other issues. So it was marginal as to whether or not that site would be approved by the Zaxby's corporate. Now, let me, let me explain a little bit how Zaxby's operates. That, that is not a company-owned store. That is a franchise store that's owned by, uh, the Browns, the Brown Brothers. And, and, uh, so it's, while they have to, they have to abide by a lot of corporate rules and so forth, much as anybody else who has a franchise, uh, it's owned by them. Uh, so they approached us, approached me, as to whether or not, and they knew about this constitutional amendment. And they approached me as to whether or not there was anything that we could do to give them consideration on sales tax rebate under, uh, Constitutional Amendment seven twenty-five, considering the increase in tax, uh, increase in cost that were gonna be, uh, associated with that business. They liked Andalusia, they liked the people of Andalusia, and they were excited about the prospect of coming here, but it was gonna cost them more money to locate here than it was in Greenville, and, uh, potentially a lower volume of traffic out there. So there was more risk associated with, uh, with that, uh, project, and they had to get it approved. It was about a one-point-five million dollar investment that they made there, and they will have between twenty-five and thirty-five jobs out there, depending on what time of the year it is and, and other variables. Uh, now, what does the city consider when we, when one of these things is brought to us? Uh, now, the first, the first consideration is, it has to be, there has to be a request made. Somebody has to come to us and say, "Would you consider doing a tax rebate, sales tax rebate on a project I wanna do?" We don't, we don't go out and seek people out and say, "Hey, would you be interested in a sales tax review, uh, rebate?" We don't do that, because we, that's something that we hold kinda in reserve, and we only talk about it, quite frankly, if somebody asks for it. And they have to know about it, and they have to do the background and the, and the homework to know about it. Uh, so what, what are the criteria that the city looks at, uh, in order to consider granting such a request? Uh, first, the business must request such rebate. And I, I've already stated it, but I'll restate it again. We'd never voluntary offer that to someone unless they request it. Second, the business investment by the requesting business must be significant. In this case, one-point-five million dollars is significant in my mind for an investment. Third, the business must create significant number of new jobs. And I consider twenty-five to thirty-five new jobs significant. And fourth, there must be other extraneous benefits accruing to the city besides these three things I just listed. In this case, this is the remaking of a high-profile location in Andalusia that has been an eyesore for many, many years. And had been sitting vacant for many, many years and not creating any sales tax revenue, uh, for the city, or for the county, or for the state. So, we felt like that, that redoing that, uh, that intersection there as far as the location of that business would be much, much of an improvement, uh, to what was there, or had been there and sitting empty for many, many years. And fifth, the rebate only continues if the business remains open for the appro- for the approved time period and exactly matches, matches the sales generated by the business. In other words, there was no sales tax being generated before they located there. Now there's sales tax being generated, and their rebate exactly matches what their sales is. Other words, we don't, we don't front-end load it, or back-end load it, or anything like that. It matches what their sales is. In this case, two cents for four years. Two cents. So they're not getting, and, and that's the other thing. We don't ever give all the tax away. It, 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 only a portion of it. Uh, we, the city must, uh, must be fair, because the city will be consistent with other existing businesses who want to expand, for example, in Andalusia. If they want to, uh, existing businesses who would choose to expand and make an investment similar to what we've talked about, create new jobs, those kinds of things, we will consider those just as we have a new business coming to town. Uh, so in this case, Zaxby's met all of the requirements, and we entered into an agreement with them, uh, that, that this is something we would do. Now, under the, under the constitutional amendment, before we can make a refund to, to the, a business, we have to run the ad in the paper and have a hearing, just like we're having right now, a public disclosure of this. And, and we did that in all the other three instances as well, and, uh, had no complaints about it at all. Now, uh, I, I went through all of that, hopefully, to answer some questions that, that you might have in your mind about it before we get started. But I have a list of names here, folks who are interested in speaking about this, and we will, we will proceed, uh, to do that before the city takes, before the council takes any action on this. Uh, and, uh, we have the same rule, ask, the same rule apply here that applies to, uh, that applied to the previous speakers, that you, you, uh, make your comments within three minutes, and, uh, our city attorney will give you a thirty second, let you know when you've got thirty seconds left, and then let you know, uh, when there's ten seconds left. Okay, Mr. Attorney? Okay? The first name I have on the list is Norman Hobson. Mr. Hobson?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to y'all tonight, and to the other council members. My name is Norman Hobson, I'm a business owner in this town. You haven't seen me down here before, I don't come to many meetings. I trust that my leaders will do the right thing for the citizens of this town. The things that you just said make a lot of sense. Uh, and I can see your reasons for offering the rebate. But still, to me, it seems very unfair to the other business owners in this town, particularly to the people in this town who are in the food industry, who've lived here for years, worked here for years, paid their fair share of taxes through the years, trying to make this place a better, better town for all. Uh, don't get me wrong, I'm very, very excited that Zaxby's is here. I've eaten there several times, I love the food. But I, again, I, I understand what you said, that people have to ask for it, but I know they may not know about it. But it just looks to me like it's showing favoritism to the other people in this town who work and pay their fair share of taxes. And I wish that y'all would reconsider that and not grant them this rebate.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Uh, Chris Lawrence?
Mayor, council, I appreciate you letting me get up and say my, my piece. Uh, we've already talked about this before. I realize that before I even speak, that, uh, we've already got yes votes from everybody. Uh, I don't see how Ms. Hazel Griffin, uh, being a retail owner at one point, could vote yes on this. Uh, I came to Andalusia not to get a rebate on, on my taxes. I came to Andalusia to support the city, and I support the city. Uh, it seems to me that what you're doing is completely unfair. Uh, what you're doing is putting an extra burden on the small merchants. Uh, you said that this deal had been done for Marvin's. We had a, a local, uh, lumber business that has been, uh, definitely hurt, and I'm talking about a local business that's been in Covington County for years that was hurt by this. Uh, the, the local, uh, small businesses are, uh, this is just absolutely not fair to them. Uh, and, and I would ask you if you would, uh, do me a favor, and you have been a Rotarian, uh, for as long as I've been to town, and I guess before that, for over thirty years. Would you please repeat the four-way test that we say every Tuesday? And with that, I'll, I'll be gone.
Thank you. Okay, Lori Enzer?
Would you repeat?
No, no, sir, I, I won't do that.
I'm a restaurant owner, I own two restaurants here in Andalusia. And my, I have a question, can I, I've never done this before in my life. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why a restaurant?
Pardon me?
Why a restaurant? A restaurant that employs mainly teenagers, part-time employees, such as we do ourselves. It really doesn't bring in new residents. It, it simply, when a restaurant in Andalusia opens, a town the size of Andalusia, it simply takes revenue from other existing restaurants and puts it into the new restaurant. Of course, everybody wants to go to the new restaurant when it first opens.
Sure.
Case in point, our tropical smoothie, which opened this year. Shame on us for not looking and understanding and finding out about this, uh, tax rebate. Of course, we would've asked for it. Um, but, uh, why? A, a, a restaurant? It just, it makes no sense. Our revenue went down twenty-five percent. Where did it go the week Zaxby opened? It went to Zaxby's. And I guarantee you, every restaurant in town, uh, they went down. It went to Zaxby's. Ours, summer is our biggest time for tropical smoothie, everybody wants smoothies. It really hurt our business, which happened to have opened. We employed twenty-two people when we first opened. And I just, I, I understand the Marvin's, the Goody's, those, those, those are needed. The Hibbett Sports, those are needed. But to, to give it to a Zaxby's is just, it makes absolutely no sense to me. We employ twenty-five people between our two restaurants.
Okay.
And I know we didn't ask for it. I understand the, it did make coming into Andalusia look a lot better. It sure made that mall look a lot worse, but...
Well, I, I don't disagree with that. I assure you. Do you, would you like for me to respond to the question?
Sure.
All right, uh, I know that it's hard to put yourself in somebody else's shoes, and my, my shoes, as, as the mayor, and the council's shoes, as the council, is to try to look in, in the long run, best interest of the city.
Right.
And, and we have to make decisions based on what we think will help Andalusia move forward in the long run. And I, I can tell you, when I go around Andalusia during campaigns and during other times, people are const- constantly asking, "Why don't you get us a this, or a that, or the other?" And that's what this is. That's one of those this, that's, and, or the other.
Applebee's.
Well, there you go. But now, if we did the same thing for Applebee's, then we'd have some of the other, uh, restaurant owners up here fussing at me about that, you see? So, we can't, I, I, I'm gonna try to reply to this in a way that, that I, we, we can't get into the protectionist business. In other words, you know, I've been to your restaurant several times and like it very much. Uh, but I also go to all the other restaurants in town. Uh, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a lawyer, I've been practicing law here since nineteen seventy-four. I'd love for this to be some kinda rule, that can't no more lawyers come to town. But, but that, you know, it, we, it just doesn't work that way. And so what we're trying to do is to build an economy, and we're trying to build retail economy, because retail helps other retail. And, and that's, that's the way I see it. Now, I understand that to some degree, uh, especially in the front end, you're swap, kinda swapping money around amongst the same kinds of restaurants. But I think that you will see that not continue for very long. I think, I think your business will come back, and you'll do well. Uh, you have a different kind of restaurant than, than Zaxby's has, and...
Well, it has come back, as, as, as a matter of fact. But it's still, it makes, it just makes no sense to me, a restaurant. It doesn't really bring in...
Well, it's part, it's part of the mix, Lori.